We'll have a moment of silent meditation, pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I want to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It's March 8th. It's 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners here, and we will start with consents and approval after the meeting. Of course, it's just a call to order. Good morning, Manette.
Good morning. We have seven exonerations to approve this morning for $8,683.79. One request to create a new statement in the amount of $1,384.50. Minutes for March 1st, 2023. Vouchers, General County, 241,726.89. 911, 742.92. Chestnut Ridge Park, 12,581.70. Camp Muffley, 1,009.72.61. Mason Dixon Park, 5,125.89. Mon County Center, 606.60. Recreation Levy, 299.63. Assessment Valuation, 1,008.83. Dave Report Center, 79,613.35. ARPA, 103.864.16. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, 23,246.56. 911, 2,005.98.76. Camp Muffley, 438.12. Mason Dixon Park, 201.53. Mon County Center, 781.02. Assessment Valuation, 5,821.30. For a voucher total of 481,504.04. We have no budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for March 8th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Obviously, you noticed late yesterday that you were going to have a couple fiduciary items to deal with, and they didn't come up this morning, so I assume they'll come up next week.
Okay, so we'll put them on the agenda for next week. Okay. Thank you. Introduction of new employees. Jimmy Smith? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'd like to introduce two new employees this morning that started on March 1st. Haley Cagle and Peyton Britton. They're starting as telecommunicators at a salary of 19.18 per hour.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second. I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We've been fortunate. We've had no snowstorms. Knock on. I just gave the card. Mason Dixon Historical Park?
Yes, I received a letter from Angela, the superintendent, Jamison Kuhn, who's worked for you for several seasons. Groundskeeping out at Mason Dixon Park. We're going to rehire him. Start date, March 13th, 2023. Seasonal part-time maintenance, $12 an hour.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second. I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we have any others?
We did have one for Youth Services Center, but they withdrew that this morning, so.
Okay, I know. It's becoming difficult to get quality people there. Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Please state your name, address, and you'll have three to four minutes to discuss your issue.
My name is Jason Charles. I am known by no other name. I have no address to give you for it was taken from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated. In the time of my Lord on earth, the church persecuted him through the manipulation of the people. The Roman governor, Pontius Pilate, the fifth governor of the Roman province of Judea, did the bidding of the people. He was manipulated by the false teachers, knowing not the truth that the Christ represented. He carried out his crucifixion. This church is not the church today, and today, the state is the only one with the power to persecute a follower of Jesus Christ. It is not the fact that the sheriff Perry Palmer took my precious treasure, my irreplaceable family Bible. It is the action that he does not care and denies taking it. I have stood to his face and asked for it to be returned. He is like David, having all that he desires, yet takes from the poor homeless man and does not think twice. Our leadership is flawed, and so will come the fall of those partaking and supporting it. We are all called to a higher standard. To be labeled a devout Christian has become like being labeled a unicorn or a leprechaun. When the lukewarm, backslidden, or hypocrisy, or hypocrite Christian should be the unicorn leprechaun. As reflected on last week, what is being praised is the state. Many have put their hope in the false promise of the state based on lies. I have no power to stop anyone from creating or maintaining a lie. All that I have is the truth, the knowledge of how, through their perversion, leads so many astray. They hide in the darkness of the lie and present their falsehoods as an angel of light, when in fact, the true light will shine upon the darkness, and the darkness will not stand. It seems to me that if anyone that is called to perfection, that one would wean oneself of any ungodly deed. 1 John 4:4, "Now I know that is not me, but he that is in me." This meaning that when one's heart is filled with the knowledge of righteousness, acting in righteousness is commonplace. What God has joined together, let no man separate, Mark 10:9. It is unintelligible to me how one could think that an earthly man could tell another man, "This woman is no longer your wife. Stay away from her." And then, if you don't, Perry Palmer will lock you up. That this could be thrust upon one if one is incarcerated. Without ever saying a word, one could go to jail and come out homeless, penniless, and wifeless. The legal union of the state-created legal entities is a lie. For if this union marriage can be separated by an earthly man, if this is the reality one chooses, it is a road leading to destruction. The marriage license permitted by Kerry Lani Blaney right here in this building is anti-Christ. It is against the truth of the will of God. And anyone that leads a child of God into this false teaching, according to the word of God, it is better for him to, well, read it for yourself. It's in Mark 9:42. From a young age, I sought after marriage for many reasons. I held marriage as a high calling. For now, knowing the truth that what the state calls marriage is in fact a false reality of the word of God, I could not escape, for no matter how hard I tried. And now, it is clear to me through trials how their lie will not stand. What may have started out as good has become anything but. We are all called to holiness. Be not a partaker of a lie. It is not that one's marriage in the eyes of God, it is not that one married in the eyes of God cannot overcome the power of the claim to be married in this legal unity of the state, but one cannot serve two masters. One cannot blame God for their failed marriage when one has a state union. Blame the state. There are clearly two kingdoms. Make your choice wisely, knowing the fullness of both.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Feel free to come on down if you want to state your name and your address.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Jack Adams. I live at 394 Mayfield Road. I'm the owner of Mountain Laurel Kennel, 15,000 square foot facility that we just built in the Cheat Lake area. This is the preliminary steps. I know. I appreciate your time. To get this documented, basically, I've got a couple residents that would like to read some talking points, but we have an emergent issue on Mayfield Road due to lack of maintenance, common core maintenance plan through the DOH. And this is our first step to remedy and find some common ground to get some issues addressed before they become, you know, an emergency issue. We've got over six, seven businesses on Mayfield Road. The traffic has increased probably 100-fold. We have probably anywhere from 80 to 110, 120 vehicles Monday through Friday now with the gym traffic, kennel, and the other businesses, not to count the residents alone as well. The road is in such disrepair, and we have got constant lip service from the DOH. We've tried. We've documented through the DOH the steps that we needed to do to approach them. They have remedied some, but we're still far from where we need to be. The ditch issues, anything like that, the widening, things that were promised have fallen to the wayside. And just like I said, it's just, this is our preliminary. As we have another meeting scheduled, we're going to try and get on your docket for a little bit bigger. But it is a Mon County issue. It's, you know, it's a DOH issue. It's a state issue, and it's a safety issue. So that's why we're starting here, to get that check in the block. Our next meeting will hopefully be with you guys, the next one with the DOH officials, and then we'll continue to go up until hopefully we can get some remedy. Just like I said, I'm going to yield my time. I just wanted to.
They could each have, each person will have their time.
Okay. And just like I said, I don't want it to turn into a whining session. I'm not here for that. I understand people transit the road, residents. We built the gym. We understand that there was going to be some issues with the traffic flow. We're the new home for Morgantown Volleyball Club. We've got several things, Cheat Lake Youth Basketball. We've got several events, and the kennel's been there since 2001. But then, when I retired, I bought it, and we built a second kennel in 2015, such increasing the traffic even more. It's turning into an issue where I see potential civil issues, altercations with, you know, that would require police interaction, that sort of thing. Because it's, a lot of people don't like the traffic. They tend to handle it a different way. You know, restraining orders, safety violations, or safety orders, that sort of things have been issued. But it's getting to a point where we need to address it, and it has come down to a road issue, basically. And I've talked to Chief Lipscomb. He's put it out. They do random patrols. We've been documenting everything. So we just, this is our preliminary steps to hopefully gain some traction with the DOH, to get some visibility to that road. It can be widened in spots if ditching and trenching and mowing, if they kept up with the common core maintenance plan, which probably hasn't been, you know, done in 20, 25 years. They've done some spot paving. They've appeased us in certain ways, come over, done the potholes. But if it would be on, held to a standard of which it was originally designed, I understand we're a Pry 3 road, but still, Pry 3 road should be safe and able to be, you know, so just to start the process so that we can be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there someone else who would like to speak?
I have one resident.
Yeah, sure. Come on down, and you get the same three or four minutes, as long as you give me your name and address. I'll make a deal.
They covered most of it. Tony Kleb, 550 Mayfield Road. Kind of following up on what Jack said. Over the last 20 years, new homes have increased by 25%. We currently have 40 homes on Lower Mayfield Road. The kennel, the flower farm, the gym, and other businesses are working off of our road. I'm not here to take sides, but what's been happening, due to the poor road conditions and it essentially being a tar and chip road, there's been conflicts between residents and people trying to access the business, where during the busy time when vehicles are coming up and down, it becomes a war zone. I mean, the residents are blocking the guests coming to the kennel and to the gym, not pulling over. Kids are getting run off into the ditches, and it's just become a mess up there. So Jack pretty much hit on everything else. It's been 20 years since our ditches have been cleared, and according to the core maintenance program, they should be cleared every third year. And we push them and push them and push them. We get a lot of lip service. So that's essentially all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Sure, come on down.
Hi, I'm Sherri Hopkins. I live at 550 Mayfield Road. I've been a resident of Mayfield Road since 1984. And, you know, it's not just an inclement weather problem that we're having. You know, if it's bad weather, our road is ridiculous anyway. But we really do need to be forward-thinking. And do you remember, Mr. Bloom, when I came to a city council meeting, when you were on city council, and I said, "They're going to timber Tibbs Run?"
Yes, I do, actually.
Okay. Well, I don't think we saw how that would snowball into what has become a destination of the Botanic Garden. And there's still property up there, lots of undeveloped property. And I just think the potential for developments, for recreational purposes, you know, we just need to be forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Is there anybody else around here, Jack? Me?
Yourself.
All right, for you.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Commissioner Bloom? Gentlemen. My name is Brent Field. I live at 112 Mayfield Road. My family and I have lived on that plot, that full acre, for 49 years now. We've been there since about 1973, 1974. And we do have a problem. Jack is not incorrect about that. And taking it up with my mother, who's kind of the dame of Mayfield Road, she said, "What's going to happen here is that the locals are going to take the matters into their own hands, and they're going to start making this hill so miserable that no one is going to want to come up to it to do business at all." And it's already happened. We're now having a gentleman with a trailer. I had to go out and clean up the mess last week myself because he was coming down. The hill wasn't yielding to anyone. When I got out there, there were five cars stacked up trying to get up the hill, and what do they do? We have a one-lane road at best. And so I ended up bringing everyone into our driveway, because we have a very long driveway, and then recycling everyone once we'd gotten the trouble out of the way. So some of the locals, maybe just one of the locals, is reacting poorly and not in an adult fashion at all. So someone's, a solution needs to be found. And that's really my issue, is that we have, as I said, a one-lane road at best. I know that I have pain a great deal of the time, and just driving to my home and back out physically caused me pain. The hill is just, it's awful. And yeah, if you get two cars, then there's a negotiation of whom goes up. You guys are familiar with Montague County roads. I don't have to tell you about Mayfield Road, County Road 75 over 4, which made my entire home for my entire life. If you're familiar with Fields Park or Fields Park Road, that's us. My grandfather was Teddy Field. He was the field of Fields Park. So we are local. We love this area. We do not plan to leave it. I came back to raise my three children here. But we have an issue, and I would prefer to get it done without having, you know, we used to have, when I worked at MECA, we used to have deputy sheriffs sometimes have to come out and escort people up and down, you know, out of a troublesome area. And I don't want to put Perry to that trouble. We don't need that. What we need is a solution, and what a great solution would be is just a wider road. Because then people wouldn't have to worry so much about yielding and the dance that everyone does when they're trying to go up or down a hill on a one-lane road. So that's it, gentlemen. Jack's actually right. I had counted one day, and we had 80, because it was, it's people dropping their kids off for volleyball and then coming back from volleyball. And so if you think about it, just 20 cars going up is 20 cars up, 20 cars down. Then picking up the kids at 7:30 or at 9:30, it's 20 up, 20 down. So we've got 80 trips on that road in, I don't know, an hour. And, you know, if the locals can't get up and down the hill, they're going to get a little saucy, and that's what we're having happen, gentlemen. So I appreciate your time, as always, to stand in service for the people of Montague County, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'll close the public portion. We are not allowed to respond. Well, it's a policy that we do not respond until our commission reports, and we don't have too many, so, the rest of the meeting. So it should be pretty quickly before any of the three would like to respond. With that, do we have any grants? Colleen Kuhn, thank you.
I have the Community Corrections Grant application. We're requesting $228,968. So you will need to sign that, the standard conditions and assurances, the special conditions and assurances, independent contractor agreement with RDVIC, and an MOU with the local community criminal justice board.
Move to approve the president signing the documents as presented?
Second.
I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondents, VFW Post 9916. We received a letter from them.
Mm-hmm. Do you want me to elaborate?
Yeah, just a general synopsis would be fine, just sort of public.
I guess for the freeze that happened back Christmas time, they had some waterline separation, and they've had others. So they're asking for a set aside for that. That's all of the letters of support I have so far.
Okay.
I expect more in the next couple of days, because the deadline's the 12th.
Correct. Does anyone have any other correspondence?
I have others.
Oh, okay.
Not just, not letters of support.
Yeah, go ahead.
We received correspondence from an Amy Hegedorn, also regarding the Mayfield Road issue. And then also Mary Beth, that's, was she here? Mary Beth T. A. J. C.? No, that was not her? Okay. Also from her regarding the Mayfield Road issue. We also received a list of apportioned values of public utility property located in Montague County. This was sent to us via the State Auditor's Office for fiscal year 2324, $326,208.990. And one more. This is an administrative order from Judge DeChristopher, that's weird to say that, regarding the new magistrate that's taking the place of magistrate Gageau that resigned. Tim Potchus was appointed effective yesterday.
Yes.
That is all.
I have two more. Did you?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I have two more. One, I received an email from Casey Kaiser, who is involved with the ECO car program at WVU, the Advanced Vehicle Technology Competitions, and they're in their first year again. It's like a four-year challenge. It's a 2023 Cadillac Lyra Q and a battery electric vehicle, and they've invited the three of us to come up and look at their program. And I said we would discuss it and see what times if we were able to do that. The second is an email, which is a little bit disappointing and will be a great loss to this community. Rachel Cohen, Chief Programs Officer of the West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness. She was in charge of 47 of the 55 counties and did an amazing job. And while others on both sides were screaming and yelling, she kept a very professional outlook. She really helped our community and the other counties, and she will be a great loss to this area. And I wish her the best of luck. But I did want to announce, she did send us a note stating that she was moving on, and that will be a big void to fill in the coming future. Okay. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. New business consideration approved a revised requisition, number 73, for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
This requisition was actually approved last week, but I had made a calculation error and sent the property tax to the excise tax and vice versa. So getting a new requisition approved today, it actually is increased because we got another requisition from Unicat, or another invoice from Unicab. So the new requisition amount is for $6,343.75.
Move that we approve the revised requisition 73 as presented?
Second.
I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Consider approve revised requisition number 19 for the University Town Center Series 2020 Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund, as you just stated.
Yeah, so this one is $1,056.25.
Okay.
Move that we approve revised requisition number 19 as presented?
Second.
I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Consideration approve a request by Main Street Morgantown for use of the Courthouse Square Small Business Saturday, November 25th.
Move that we approve the request as presented?
Second.
I'll move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we have any other new business?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, are there any reports from elected officials and department supervisors? Anybody want to speak up at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will go reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Since our last meeting, last Friday, we had staff reports and then had our broadband sync. This week, we had some budget meetings. Yesterday, I had some budget meetings with the staff. Today's a regular day, but then we start into our budget hearing, so we'll be pretty busy. Tomorrow is the second Thursday of the month, which is my usual meeting busy day. I have MAP Executive Committee meeting in the morning, then the Red Team, and then Development Authority meeting. Friday's staff reports and more budget hearings, and then we'll have budget hearings into next week. This next Tuesday is my regular Juma meeting. Did want to thank you guys for coming in and expressing your concerns. As you know, and you've probably heard this 100 times, we don't have any control over the roads, but we certainly can help the conversation, and it has helped in the past. So we will relay your concerns in addition to everybody that's discussed the concerns here. I had a resident that emailed me a couple times, which I forwarded on to Tom, and we put on their Department of Highways agenda. So we'll certainly, I've been up your road. I know it's very narrow. It's a nightmare. It needs a comprehensive solution, not just some tar and chipping, and not just some paving in spots. So we'll certainly see if we can raise that to DOH's attention. Your being here certainly does raise that. And again, we'll, hopefully, we can work with DOH to work with you and your residents. So we'll certainly take advantage of it. I did want to congratulate Tim, and he's magistrate again, and Tim did a very good job. He was appointed by Judge Tucker when, I can't remember the circumstances, which magistrate left when he was appointed a couple years ago, and then he lost a close election. So Tim is an experienced magistrate. He'll bring experience immediately to the position, and we're in need of that because we're shorthanded as far as magistrates are concerned. So congratulations to Tim. It's a well-deserved appointment, and I'm happy that Judge DeChristopher made that selection. That's all I have.
Just a couple of things. I, too, have traveled Mayfield Road many times. I used to take my dog to Jackson. He doesn't miss an opportunity to let everyone know about his road, including every probably elected legislator in the state on a regular basis, and we appreciate your persistence. As Sean said, we're limited in what we can do, but we certainly have the ear of the DOH, and we've done some things in the past to help with certain projects. So I'm sure we'll listen to what they have to say and make sure they listen to what you have to say, at least through our contacts with them. So we appreciate you coming in, and we do understand the concern out there. Something for Jimmy. Just heard on the radio this morning, the 911 center being constructed in Wayne County, or some of those burglarized. When we're doing ours, make sure someone's out there watching our stuff, please, because they lost a whole bunch of stuff, and that could be bad. So I'd just like to thank the Judge DeChristopher for the appointment of now magistrate Potchus. I was before him before, and he does do a very good job. And I'd like to thank Judge Tucker for her years of service on the bench, and she'll be missed. It'd be interesting to see what the council and then the governor does to appoint, heck, we're just a few months apart from when they appointed Judge DeChristopher. So it'll be interesting to see what happens there. That's all I got, Tom.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I'd be remiss if I wouldn't congratulate Judge Tucker on her retirement. I consider Susan a personal friend. She's, years of service to Mon County is greatly appreciated, and I wish her luck in her retirement. And one other thing, Tom, is we have not had a regular meeting with the Department of Highways. They used to come in and update us. So I know we're going through budget time now, but maybe we can get something scheduled in April so they can come in and answer questions about the roads. And then that would be a good opportunity for individuals that have concerns. These are public meetings, and they can come in and ask those questions directly. And again, a lot of times, that one-to-one contact goes a lot further than getting a SWAT email or SWAT. What are they called? Is it SWAT or SWAT?
SWAT.
Email, situation awareness with, anyhow, it's their complaint line.
Yes, it's the government SWAT line.
Getting a, getting an email out of that about an, about an area, it doesn't add the human aspect to it of the people that are really dealing with issues, and you should be able to drive up the road and get to your house without, without verbal assault, or you should be able to go drop your kids off at volleyball, you know, same thing. So, it does need to be addressed, and hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll pay attention.
And it certainly seems the time for a permanent solution up there. I know through Jack's efforts over the years, he's gotten a lot of paving done here and there, and, but it's just putting lipstick on a, on a pig, so to speak, until you get the actual solution put forth. It's needed. I'm sure it's needed in a lot of places, but Mayfield's one of the ones, Brockway also, that just keeps coming up over and over and over again, so we certainly appreciate you coming in.
Continuing along that line, I think that's a great suggestion I've written down. The commissioners have allowed me to be, I guess I'm the liaison when I talk with the DOH, but I think that's a great idea, that let's look in April, I will ask to set up a meeting here, and on the agenda will be Mayfield. Again, my recommendation would be if you could be prepared to have like, you know, a two or three-page documentation with, and also especially the confrontations that are going on, that's the, also the concern that we have, too. And, yeah, things are not going to get better unless we try and come up with a solution. I will say, I mean, like you said, it's a tier-three road, and unfortunately, we're still working on tier-one roads. And in fact, just to give you an idea, you talked about SWAT. When I met with them, there were six thousand SWAT requests last year just in Mon County. And was, we tried to explain to them, we have problems here, and, you know, we met with, this was with the MMPO, and, you know, we were very concerned about the future of the roads, and we will definitely put that on, but we will still send the message immediately to them, and I think with the media here, I have a feeling you, you have a better resource than we do, but we will definitely pass that on. I know you're asking to widen the roads. I know. We, we, I know what it was like with just the Mylan Park Road, you know, and this is a tertiary road, but, but you have something that we're very worried about, which is economic development and also housing. And we have to get our leaders in Charleston, and I will say our elected leaders in Mon County, to realize that they need to be assertive and not sit back. And I believe also that I will invite them for that meeting, for that DOH, because they're the ones who finally may be able to get some funding and pressure. So, again, we apologize, we understand what you're going through, it doesn't solve the problem, but we will work with you and see how we can help you on that. So, I appreciate you being here. Second, ironically, we're talking about roads, but I do also want to say that we do have a city council member here, Dave Harshberger, and so he, he gets it from the city, and so he can see that we are also getting it from the county, and we have also worked with the city. We're very concerned about Brockway, and we need to do something. That is an entrance. We finally are looking at 119 and 73, but Brockway is key for us also. So we are working, and that's just another area that we want to work in. I have some good news for you. I want to thank you, because I was down last night downtown, and I saw my first two walking policemen downtown, and I want to thank you. And then I saw in the paper today that there will be some policemen, and hopefully when those eight people come. But it really did make a difference, because there were our usual, some of my former students that were down there that have not made the best decisions. And when they saw the policemen, it did make a difference. Just by them seeing them, they were a little more controlled. So again, I want, please pass that on, we were very pleased to see that. And again, just as Sean said, we are in the middle of budget hearings. That's four days plus the fifty-eight grants that have been submitted that we're going through, and hopefully we will get all the information from the state, so we will know the numbers that we have, so we can make better decisions. And, and that is it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We be gone.